Your fault.
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we're going to be reviewing a hand history. Uh from the sixteen fifty on this weird network. So let's get started.
That ACR or what was it?
A weird place. I'm not sure if I would play on there.
What is the site?
ACR.
Just by just.
Yeah.
Doesn't seem to be very safe.
Site of the.
Yeah.
Bring that up.
Not allowed in Greece, so it must be very unsafe.
Not allowed in Greece. Wow.
Yes, for the Caribou Rose.
Alright, icing a limper.
The, the major providers are blocking it. Too late range.
Never wrong.
I recall.
Jonathan is.
I like limping back. You can squeeze, but it's a bit spicy. Okay, this kind of texture, we would want to go like dig that, right?
It's, it's a low, it's a low, it's a bit low for isolating, three big blind.
But are we, we are on the button versus?
Oh, yeah, but on this texture here, what kind of size do you guys like?
Versus a limper, I'm told, so I'll probably go close to pot.
Very turn. Against how deep we are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Large.
On the initial size of the raise, someone said it was a bit small. So yeah, it's small theoretically, but on this stacks with a stack depth of twenty, you can probably size down.
Oh, yeah.
It's only six.
Yeah, but yeah, i- if you start, if you size down, the guy, the guy have the hood and I have the, I don't know where to call.
Yeah, yeah.
So I was playing around in HRC after our last like thing. Oh, it wasn't recorded, but LP was getting into me about the lip pots. And overlimping. So what I saw is, and I played it around it quite a bit. With lippers that limp really wide and call really wide after they limp and shit. So what I liked though was basically like raising offsuit aces that are like ace jack. And then all your suited broadways. And even like kick nine. Um, we nine jack like down the nines. So you raised all this good suited stuff and just offsuit aces is what it liked. Hard to know what's good.
Okay, I'm here. My family's here though. I'm ready. I'm ready for what the, yeah, I was gonna be, you're like, where are you? And I was gonna, and one of the auto replies was like, I'm home. And you could be like, I know you're home. I bet it's.
You came offline. I said hi, you came online, you went straight back off. Okay, I had no overs.
Oh, I was.
There you are. So A here, check this out. Uh, Justin Saliba, a wonderful uh. Made a new class uh on poker coaching. I don't know if you had time to see it, but in there, it says that like, you know how we should range bad most pair boards small, and that's usually very good. Based on all the sims I had and all the previous work we did, the study session, that was it, right?
Mm hmm.
But Justin, uh, when he runs sims, he puts a lot of sizings and he figured out one little trick here. It's on pair boards. Instead of like betting small, which is like twenty-five percent, thirty percent, whatever. If you just go one big blind here, uh, you can actually almost range bet any two, and it's extremely tough to play against. So instead of like going small here, like you do, but like this is what I, I do like that not too long ago. Well nowadays, uh, you can do one big line. And it would be a very good strategy. And uh, here like the, the machine says one big line as well. Like even GTA Wizard doesn't really add the one big line bet. It has a ten percent. But if, if we go out there and use the one big line, it's closer to GTA.
Yeah, that's something I, I added in my game after watching the video.
Yeah, I'm also doing that now, but.
So here.
See, it's where some people react a really crazy, crazy way. Sometime.
Yeah, some, sometimes they spaz and need that.
Yeah, sometime they, they got, they, they re-raise you with shit. Uh, you get more EV.
What, what do you do here, Eric?
Raise.
Eric, I raise. All right. Uh, I can go all in, all in.
No, three raise. Oh, that's small. That's small.
I will go all.
I, I was thinking I should make it eight, but oh wow.
I would have raised the seven, seven and a half.
All in with, with pretty much all my range, but if I never did it with the king, uh, maybe I will play a little bit tricky. Uh, if I didn't uh raise all in previously, so maybe raise to eight.
Uh. Basically she nailed it. Uh, it's a three bad small. It's not an all in here. Uh, let's look at the range.
Catch is if you're gonna use this as a three bet small, what are you gonna use as a three bet block?
Well, not much here, right? So this is a strategy pre flop. So Viv, is this what, is this what you're doing? You're just trying to lure the guys in with uh.
Just say yes.
I, I don't know if Ace Jack suited it. I would do that with, but maybe I should like, I've asked the other through that small. Cause I usually go way weaker. I look there. You're not even going weaker with your bluffs. It's Ace Jack suited. What the heck?
Well, it's.
Uh, I just ate off and Queen ate off.
Back up. Everyone is really short. So like the shorter you get. You're more straightforward.
You're, yeah, you're just calling your week and then you're raising the aces and kings and then jamming. King ten and then, yeah, I, I guess I was too weak and I would probably be.
I like that play a lot. The, the machine says you could size up anyway, by the way. Machine says you could.
It's seven or eight.
Eight big blind.
I was thinking eight just now, but I guess in game I was six.
Yeah, you want to keep him in. So, yeah.
No other sizing than uh.
Perfect. It was a perfect sizing. Look at that.
Happy day.
He jammed ace five.
Cut the fish.
Yeah.
I don't know.
He's open that you weak to GM caller.
What is wrong with this man?
These are the people that are crushing me this month.
Sixteen fifty dollar tournament.
Wow, he, he didn't get this, that's for sure.
Ish on the line.
Until he's probably freaking.
Okay, open from under the gun and then under going with calls.
I better squeeze. I better not fold. If I fold, I'm gonna get yelled at.
Uh, I like a call here. I don't like a squeeze too much.
Oh, I mean, call can work too. Please don't fold.
I don't think you're gonna fold. Let's see what you're gonna do.
Oh, I squeezed.
You squeezed. Oh, it's a fold.
It is a fold. Yeah, like it's kind of close here. This, when it, when under the gun raises.
Yeah. Can you not?
And they call. How do you play? I mean, they can.
Yeah, yeah, small blind against two players, two strong.
It is, it is a fold when you're deeper. I know when you're deeper and that happens, it's a fold.
Oh, but also look at the low jack calling range. That's also strong. I mean, two strong ranges.
Okay, so we don't have.
Oh, squeak. Look at how little squeezing there is. Wow.
I, it's because it's like under the gun one and low jack.
Squeezing, no calling, you mean?
Yeah, I read it wrong. Yeah.
You're never, I, I don't think you call a small blind once two people have V pips. It's, it's rare that small blind calls when two people.
Scott has also, because the solver doesn't have that option.
Really? Really, Viv? Are you confident about that or you just made that up, Viv?
When it's like this, when it's under the gun and, and somebody else and two people V pip, most sims don't run the call option. But.
Are you confident about this? What's your confident level?
I'll say, I'll say seventy percent confident because I, I always. I always look at the charts and I'm, I'm surprised.
Okay, well, not, not a great three bet here.
It's too low.
Yeah, I, I thought I, I should have made it ten if I'm through betting. I, I'm just folding. I'm not.
You are, you just went on the fold there, but uh, seven off.
Yeah, so the correct answer was fold. I was like, I fold here, Lewis is gonna be like, what? Are you knit last time? But it's actually a fold on the machine. The machine doesn't like that.
Yeah.
You're, you're just like in that spot. You're just like, why do I have Ace Jack here?
Alright, here I like.
If you doubt, just fold.
Great call. Check.
Oh no. Oh no, do I call? I think I, I fold, I call.
I think you can call here.
I would have been.
Uh, uh.
I don't think you get to fold.
Yeah, you can't fold there.
I'm abandoning ship.
Maybe erase, but not fold.
Seven, six.
I don't want to raise the turn here. I want to raise.
Uh, yeah.
I call and then I hit a seven?
Heart. We need a heart.
We hit a seven.
A seven might do.
And then I call him off.
Yeah, pray doesn't have ace king.
I don't like, he doesn't have an ace king.
Apparently he doesn't. Yeah, you can have ace, you can have a lot of value hands, so yeah.
We beat a lot of values.
Only ace green and king queen, uh.
Oh, yeah, when your review went, I, I think I got a lot of gifts in this tournament.
That's true.
So do you guys think it's a call or a fold here?
I mean, failure answer win against.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not folding.
You guys think it's a call or a fold here?
Call.
Did anything I checked to fold here?
Uh, maybe it's even a fold.
No.
No, I didn't.
Yeah, you, you block jack shit.
Only bottom set. That's the only thing you block.
Alright, so I think. Well, let's make.
I think it's closed actually, but.
Let's just make arguments. Okay, so one argument for folding is having hearts.
Yeah. And, and no queen and no jack. I mean, not blocking two pair.
Are they supposed to bluff with hearts?
A reason to call is we made two pairs.
We have a hidden hand that we're not really supposed to have, so let's go.
And it's only uh, that's just under.
The SPR.
Okay.
Main reason.
SPR is one. We never hold the bear.
Yeah, the other thing is you're ahead of some of his value here when he has king, queen or ace queen as well, so.
But they don't have enough bluffs.
Thank, thank you. That's why, that's why it's an instant call for me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And still ahead of some of his value.
True, but uh.
So we blocked some of his bluffs, but we beat a lot of his value, a lot.
Hmm.
That is why this is, this is gonna probably earn like three chips as a return investment here. It's not gonna be great, but it's gonna be good.
Why is it a call?
Let's see the machine. The machine says a always a call.
Hundred percent.
Okay.
And eight and a half shifts.
And then. Has it?
That's one of the, yeah.
Well, also that can uh.
You scanned the bear.
Yeah, I scammed him. Now I got aces myself and I don't think I lose. Eight, make it eight Vivian, do it.
Yeah.
Seven point five, good sizing.
Well, Mike says he wants them.
This is how you win a tournament.
Well, Mike. So you want.
Cat, ace and kings, every hand. Oh, we're going by V pip. Never mind. Uh, I think we just flat this one though. Oh, maybe we can, I think we flat this one.
You can't forget it.
Don't do anything.
Uh, twenty-five, twenty-six big blind, very interesting.
Nine and the big blind as well.
We could go all in here sometimes.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, but you don't have a, a small blind.
Yeah, this is a good time.
One question here, do we have an all-in range?
Yes.
Okay, so is this hand in there?
Uh, I mean, we're almost thirty bags. I don't think we have an all-in range.
Playability is so good that I don't want to uh spill this hand. It's not value, it's a bluff if I do that, so.
Now, let's go look it up.
Rather have king eight or something.
Okay, I feel like this part of the deck, I would lean towards calling a lot.
I mean, also.
Uh. Uh, uh, because I think it like jams sometimes. No, it's trees, tree betting, it's not jamming.
Too deep.
So we don't have an all-in here.
Not with this hand.
So here from the button. Yeah.
They're all in.
Deep.
Um, poker coaching.
We're looking at sixty LP.
That's not sixty indeed.
I don't know why.
We're looking at sixty.
Look at twenty-five effective. I think there might be some all-ins, but I feel like it's rare.
Closer to thirty than twenty-five.
At twenty-five is a ton of all-ins and King Jack suited is one of them. At thirty.
Button versus cutoff, it might be.
Button versus cutoff and at thirty, it's also an all-in. All-in eighty-two percent, call eighteen percent for the King Jack.
That's what I thought.
Oh, I had to rip in their face with twenty-five big blinds.
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to study those ranges. The button versus cutoff, I would say my confidence level forty percent.
We're closer to thirty. What's thirty?
And thirty, and thirty, but uh.
I think it's the same thing.
It's in there at thirty also.
Thirty, it's mixing fifty fifty. I think I have a uh tendency to just flat too much here though, so that's a leak. I need to probably study those charts.
Not the biggest leak, it's a leak.
Do we flat? Here we are. Do we see bet?
He checked to be. Um.
Oh, yes, right, your button. I thought you were small blind.
It's a good bet.
Two up in range, I think I would check.
I mean.
And he's supposed to check. He's almost range checking, so he's got, he should have plenty of aces in his range.
No one in the population is range checking this board almost.
Uh, TTO, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
I mean, you're correct. People should learn. I probably oversee bet in this spot because I know it's supposed to go check, check a lot. But I didn't have any backdoors, so I didn't mind if I wasted this hand.
Backdoor straight.
Uh, yeah, backdoor straight.
But it's inside, but it's, but it's gonna be gut, gutter no matter what.
So this player stuck thirty-two thousand playing like twenty-five hour buy-ins. I doubt he's checking an ace on the flop. But.
Sometimes maybe, but uh, yeah, most players uh don't do that a lot.
Yeah, I don't think he, this particular player probably isn't, but. Uh, King, I still, you got a pretty good king here.
Oh, now I got a nice, oh, do I double barrel? I think I might.
Might as well.
I don't even remember this hand. But then his calling range does have a strong like.
I can have a pair. I mean.
I would barrel again if I bet the flop.
Go back, would he?
You can also have a king. Can't have a better one. I would check now probably.
No, yeah. So I bet small.
Okay, so.
I have a fault against that, so I think so.
So say we call. Four. So it's ace, three, three rainbow. And then cut off checks. Then we have King Jack suited without the flush. That would be clubs. We can bet small, that's fine. Called. So what is it?
An offsuit.
Two, let's go one point thirty-five. He calls. Turn is the ten of hearts.
Nah, it's a ten of clubs in this case.
Ten of clubs.
And we bet, we bet uh.
Checks. Then we don't double barrel. So oopsie. Oopsie doopsie. We, it seems like a good spot to do it, but no.
I think our value is easy to find there, but let's look at what our bluffs are. It's much like Jack high, queen high, nine high.
She's trying to double barrel. I just have a trigger hand. So.
Which is interesting because a lot of the hands are like, are no real, no draw of any kind, you know, Jack eight.
Oh, I think it makes sense then, uh, that the A size are like our top pairs and this is our best showdown after, after, right after King.
Uh, good showdown indeed.
And let me check these.
It's a pair board, so we might, we might bet it a little bit, but then after that, it's like we want to reach showdown, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw.
The other one, we bet everything smaller than a king is what it is.
A little bit too strong to do that.
Yeah.
My, my hand just is this like bet.
It feels so much better to bet it though, because you don't want, you don't want to induce any kind of bet on the river because you don't want to call anything.
No, but the strategy makes sense. I'm not supposed to be, it's too, it's too high up.
Any Broadway card is good for you, eh, on the, on that board.
Top spot, what do you guys think we should do here?
Banning ship.
It's not a bounty tournament. I think I'm probably folding, yeah, because like, what am I hoping for? Look, I was double dominated.
Yeah.
Yeah, fair point.
Now in a bounty tournament, we just snap it off.
Did you uh?
There's that same.
You uh, did you adjust your opening range because you have too short to be behind you?
I prob, you can look back at it. I think we should be.
This guy here is one of the biggest backers on GG.
Oh, really?
Which one?
Survivor thirty-nine.
He backs everybody?
Yeah.
Oh, this is, no, this is, this is correct. That's an open. Let's do it.
He's a good player on HCR, so.
He's a good break.
Hey, why do you have ace king?
Yeah, what, what's up with this, Viv?
Oh, you think I should.
When you play this one, do you ever?
No, I think you should win.
Yeah.
A little web on the river or something. Close.
On that one, do you ever raise, raise pre flop to isolate, to not, to disincentivize the big blind from playing or do you just call and if he raises, fold?
I feel like people are more honest and, and if you, I mean, I don't know. I think people are more honest. I would be calling majority, like if I'm just calling five big blinds. And.
Also go actually.
Yeah, and then I'm gonna be calling with my strong hands as well. But I'm not sure properly and then, but a lot of times with the big blind has like twenty big ones, then I think I'm, I'm gonna be tighter and isolate more. Better the big ones. Oh my gosh, this is where I gotta get roasted because I probably just like it. I might call, I might mic it. I don't remember what I did.
What's the best?
It's like great event. I don't think it's a big deal.
Yeah, it's close. I would, I would call.
You, it, it, if, if you're dominated, you're not getting enough and if you've got two live cards, you are.
Yeah, but you have a marginal ante. I mean, marginally, if you, I think if you call.
Yeah, but that you, you have to call with any two that you have.
Ace ten, ace nine, king ten. It's just terrible against ace, jack and a, and king queen.
I don't think we fold any options.
Ace green, ace jack, ace green.
Ten?
Yeah, that's why I meant, yeah, all, all those.
Nines, eights.
No, it's fine against.
Uh, I can lock.
I think it's probably like pot odds wise.
It has a linear range.
I think it's a dot spot, so.
I think it's an easy call, but.
I just think you can't really go that wrong when you're getting caught up like this, like even if it's losing, it's losing like something small.
Then I would go.
Yeah, it's just, it's just almost never less than twenty-five percent.
Um, what, what I, what I learned if.
Yeah, but it's also uh, always a question of ICM.
Yeah.
What I learned, if, if the, the guy push you, that's the nine big line, you are supposed to call with pretty much all your range that you have open.
Not twice yet.
This is chip EV, right?
Yeah, it's chip EV for now.
It's chip EV. I think it can be called.
Yeah, it's for sure a call, like if it's a chip.
I don't think you skip this open. I think skipping the open is worse than that.
Oh, you say it's a call?
Are you in the cutoff here?
Find a fold again, big blind, but I feel like against a small blind, like.
What about queen ten? What about queen ten outs? Do you call?
It's like a borderline.
Like, I don't think, I know there's, I know there's pot odds also, but I don't think like. If you make a deal, the money you make by calling and the money you make by folding, but I actually do want to know the numbers because it could be just me being a fish.
I think you fold any offshoot Broadway for that, for six more bigs, honestly.
Just click it in, because I'm gonna play some live.
Mine, if it was nine big blind, okay, we would call with King Jack. Like here we get that, we have seven big blinds to call. Oh, I think Queen Jack is in there. I would like to see it.
I'm running.
I think also Queen Jack is in, eh, for chip EV for sure.
Who jammed? Big blind?
Uh, yes, no, small blind.
Small blind?
Yes.
Yeah, I think it's a call. I may have missed. The King Jack is for sure, like you guys call off a lot more with King Jack than Queen Jack, I know.
It's so close, but it's really close. I, I want to see them out though.
So. The problem is you open jam it.
Yeah, but you don't open jam it at forty into the, this guy here.
Yeah, they have the.
They can also wake up.
Well, I'm telling you, HRC is saying open jam.
Oh my god.
Oh, at these, at these.
Wait, no, wait, we're cut off. I'm sorry. I thought we were buttoned, so cut off.
Yeah, SS button into, into like all these.
And small.
Want to share this, share, share the screen, there I can.
We don't, we don't fold any offshoot Broadway as I suspected.
Can you share?
Yeah, 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 I'm getting to it.
Yeah, first cleanup is death though.
Nah, I just had a good to it.
Okay, so queen ten, Jesus Christ.
Yay.
You just call a lot.
Like, yeah, that makes sense, like queen nine and king nine feel awful to call off.
And when calling with these, king five, king six, king seven.
I mean, honestly, yeah, if I opened it, because I'm like, he has ace ten off, I'm getting the odds I need.
Then you're just, you're a monster, Tim.
You're just good, Tim.
I just, because they don't do it wide enough.
If you guys don't know, Tim just had a baby.
Oh, nice. Congrats.
Thanks.
So he's not even really jamming worse than this and we're still calling. We're calling these and he's not even jamming really much worse.
What about one of the big blind jams? Because the big blind has like a few more big blinds, because I want to see how much like it changes the range.
Well, hang on, because can you stop it, Ken? And is it gonna give the EV a vessel and then the?
It, it gives EV now already.
Yeah.
So this is, can you show the EV, Ken? Of calling. Upstuck.
He, he's trying to tell.
Just want to know if, if it's a big difference.
He's trying to tilt us, oh there. So point nine.
Ooh, I lost a lot of money actually, but not.
Five, four, point five.
It's not a big deal, Viv. Not a big deal.
Folding's not a, that big a deal.
Okay, so nice.
King Jack, you're up here.
Thanks a lot for running it, Ken. So we need to find maybe some more suited games. I don't find enough of these.
We've got a long way to run, honestly. Some of these could come out.
I mean.
We'll just keep running in the background. We'll look back at it after a couple of hands.
Alright.
Yeah, it's probably, it's a goal. I mean, for your tip.
Very close spot.
It's not pure chip EV either. I mean, we're a little, we're probably a couple of hours into this tournament, she laid red, so it's not really pure chip EV either.
Yeah, it's all, all, the first hand is already ICM, man.
Yeah.
What about this one? A limp? Just a limp, right? Is that right?
I hope I limp because it's big stack versus small stack. Yeah.
I don't know. I think, I think raising is defensible, but I think limping is fine.
Think limping is, I would limp you. But I limp always, almost. Unless I'm the big stack.
You can go all in here, it seems.
All in?
You can rip, you can limp and you can raise.
I also think at this deck that specifically, we start to have more of, uh, we have some raisings. It's more like fifty big blinds plus that we really don't have a lot.
That, that my bet was stupid as heck.
Yeah, but that's all for tip, I, I'm amateur.
You could go one, Viv.
I know, I, I just have a. I need to start betting one, just one big blind, like one slipper more often.
That's what I do there.
Oh, man, yeah, and he, he jams and I call and he has a nine, now he just.
Wow. Wow.
Is that hand, on those tens, is that ten, are those tens usually a, a check behind?
I think my one comment on that news, you could size down, you could bet like min on that flop.
Yeah.
Yeah, you can, you can get, one big blind is ideal on the short stack spots, I just.
Right, cuz, cuz. Seven bigs or something? Uh, I don't think it's a huge difference, but it's worth keeping that option open for yourself.
Survivor, let's play versus him.
So that, on the, on the ten-ten, the reason for checking behind is it's marginal made, and the reason for betting it is that it's a vulnerable pair. Uh, which, does it, does the machine, uh, mix, or does the machine always bet it?
Uh, the other guy, I, I set, uh, seven, uh, big blind.
Yeah, seven bigs.
I would bet here and push my equity.
Eh, it, it, it's an all-in answer for seven bigs, so.
Six is almost always the best hand.
Oh, you mean like pro bet?
I would bet.
At what point would you bet, Ken?
What you mean, at what point?
On the turn?
Turn, I would lead the turn, check flop, I think a six is almost always the best end.
I think we wanna leave our sevens, eights. Oh, no, I think he's betting, yeah, it's might be betting.
Machine is betting the turn indeed.
Yeah, you wanna push.
Yeah, it's just, uh, this, then, uh, the turn.
Turn is better for the big blind than for, uh, the opener. So, yeah, you bet.
And then this happens.
I mean, I check now.
Ooh, ten gets, that's not, uh, what you want.
Oh, this is where I needed to, I folded, and I think, no.
I think it's fine, it's a four line or whatever. He shouldn't really have a ten much.
Why not?
He's a good player, he's gonna be betting his ten X on the flop, honestly. I, I would have to call.
Ace ten? No, of course not.
Think it's an easy fold, because. People don't value that often enough for ten value on the river.
He's actually a good player, though.
Doesn't matter.
He's a decent player.
But yeah, I guess I should be betting the turn there. I thought it was, I thought it was second years.
What are you gonna do with four, six off?
Yeah, I just fold.
Against the biggest stack, just.
Yeah, come on, Viv.
It's just a fold no matter what, what it is.
Yeah. Well, she, she's.
Well, I stole the pot. I know that, I know that six-three is a fold, but six-four also was.
Yeah.
Cause six-three and six-two, I would give a walk to. I think I rip it in his face here.
Seems like the only option, yeah, only option is to jam it.
Your invitation.
We survived, we survived, he had ace queen, not ace king.
Wow.
It's the tournament I won, so there'll be a lot of surviving.
A lot, a lot of that.
I wouldn't have, I probably wouldn't have opened this because of the size of the big blind here, but now you gotta call.
What are you doing, Viv?
I'm not folding.
Fine. Are you sure you're not folding?
Yes.
Do I fold? Do I fold? I might, I, I'm ninety percent sure I call, let's go.
You can't.
Don't know yet, but it's been going pretty well for you, Viv, and now we're noticing some, they're starting to slip.
This is an open.
I don't see the problem.
Is it?
This is, especially like if you look left, if cutoff and button don't have. Eh, whatever, but if cutoff and button aren't getting a lot, it just turns into an open very quickly, you know?
But if you have a time bomb on the big blind, as it's about to shove any two cards onto you, it's even less of an open.
Yeah, that's what, that's what kills it for me.
Okay.
I don't know, I only have to put in five big blinds for a pot of eleven point five.
Yeah, but you can also put in zero big blind.
Yeah, but i- it's, it's.
Oh.
It's a bad hat.
Congrats. I wanna congratulate you on going full scan here.
Jack eight suit.
Oh, my goodness, wanna see how bad you scanned this guy. Oh, he just asked king nine, that's nothing.
Yeah, but I mean, but pre-flop, you, if you pre-flop, you would, if you had any sense that these are the of, of this range, you would just skip the jack seven, you wouldn't wanna take it against the king nine, but once you raise it, you can't fold to the king nine. So that's all.
I mean, jack seven's about, about dead middle of the deck.
I have a bit, a few comments about this, and so I think you put too much run good into one hand here. You, you just needed a seven, you don't need to put that jack there, then.
You wasted the diamond.
So, y- you don't want to put all your run good into one hand, so try to, to keep, save some from, for other hands.
Yes, spread your.
I know.
Save the run good.
Save the run good, when I play the hundred dollar tournaments and not when I play the fifteen dollar tournament, right?
Yeah, that's not coached enough, that aspect of the game, honestly. You're only gonna get that here.
Okay, okay, so you're limping any two, and then you're betting the flop, one big line, all the time.
Until, until the guy starts realizing and starting to ISO me and play back.
Until then, your opponent realizes getting absolutely scanned.
That was our twenty-twenty.
I learned that in twenty-twenty from Louis police.
Yeah, that was our twenty-twenty strat.
Thank you. So, here, what, what are we gonna do? Go all in?
I'm, I'm raising him and then calling his all-in.
I'm going all in.
I'm not going all in.
Why not?
There's a lot of people behind you who have some, who have some.
Raise to six or something.
So, if, when it's gonna be shenanigan, shenaniganers call, it's gonna be forty big blinds, right?
Oh, I saw, I got it like five and a half.
And like bluffing with they screen for forty big blind is not the end of the world, right?
Got a five and a half, if all hell breaks loose, you can bet, and fold if two players go all in.
Yeah.
So I think, yeah, we three bet, and then we call off this guy.
Yeah, and fold to, and fold to somebody else.
Everyone fold, it's not, it was not that funny of a hand. Okay. Probably not gonna see that, what do you guys think?
I think I checked.
Oh, look at that card.
I'm still checking.
What a great card, though.
I, I call this.
Do we not have a four-way trainer already? Somebody has to release one.
Not that I know.
Four-way box.
These other two, it is fold.
What are we gonna do here? We need to call, we can't fold. You guys wanna fold? What if the ten comes?
Go.
Five percent.
No way I'm folding.
What if the ten comes, ten of, ten of spades?
A heart, a ten.
Or an ace, what if an ace comes?
Jack might not even be bad, honestly.
The jack is probably very bad, I'd say.
I just call and hope that someone else goes all in, and then another one goes all in, and another one goes all in, and then I call.
Uh, we wouldn't want them going all in on us, but we do wanna call this, oh, my goodness.
Problem is.
Well, maybe the answer is here, when he bets this big at this SPR, do we have? Say we are heads up, say these guys don't exist. Are you happy to play with this type of?
I'm just gonna put the rest of his chips in, if I'm heads up.
Still would call and, uh, hope that an art or an ace comes and then, uh, stack him.
It's not a great spot, right?
I'm jamming him.
I think it's fine, it's like, even if it's, yeah, whatever.
So many outs, that, uh, I mean, he has a small stack that he can't fold anymore, almost.
Okay, okay.
Oh, man, I mean.
By the way, we don't feel that good about our ace, it was a four-liner already.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, you, you can have it indeed, true.
Yeah.
I love it. Oh, no action.
They're not going, going to fold.
I got action when I had jack seven. Yeah, just steal all the blinds, man.
Ready to go, be aggressive.
Bet the flop, I mean, you can check it, but you bet like every flop.
How about, do you see that?
Uh, this is a one big blind flop. I should have bet one big blind.
Yeah, you can bet one big blind, but you could definitely check this flop versus button, big blind, I mean, but.
Let's see the machine, machine says. Machine says you can check or bet one big line.
Yeah. Pair seven, six is fives, you can start checking.
He is, he, this one's good enough to check raise me, but I think I could cha-, uh. Oh, that, I think you're supposed to call him on this board, but some, I might, maybe.
I think the way you played, you have almost, uh.
Yeah, yeah, call.
So many bluffs, uh, can have so many bluffs still.
I don't like the call here, I'm always holding.
You're full shit. You don't have a fold button.
Yeah, I think, uh.
I'm always folding here. What do you guys think we beat here?
Bluffs.
All bluffs.
All the bluff, that's good enough to call like, uh. What is that, like eighty percent, seventy percent pop?
After I kept my range two streets.
You do right, like twenty-eight percent or something, so yes, this player is good enough to find bluffs here, and what, the hands that we check, 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 check are this type of hands, so we beat his bluffs and we lose to his value. And so, yeah, it's, you're not gonna be calling like every, it's, it's just like you have to call sometimes. Now, if it's a player that's recreational, you just fold every time. And if it's a good player.
Yeah.
Call.
You're at the, you're, you're at the top.
Yeah, but there are so many.
Gotten there this way.
My reason to call is just, there are so many bluffs available for him, that he is more likely to overbluff, he can have so much, much choice from bluffs.
Okay.
That's the reason I would call him.
Never an over bet, we're gonna be having to fold.
He's actually a very good player, too, baby, he's up two hundred and fifty K.
Yeah, so if you're gonna be bluff catching, it's better to do it versus a stronger player. But if you check, 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 then you have to call a lot of the ace highs that you check, when they big blind, that's the river.
I'm just calling here.
Yeah, me too.
I call, I better call, what are you doing here? I'm calling.
Okay.
Yeah.
Dash call.
I actually like this, because I played this hand in November. This hand history is a month ago, so I don't remember every hand. Oh, I think it's too early in the action to just flat this, but I think.
What the fuck is this raise?
It's also with everyone on the table being so short, the deepest one behind you is twenty, so when the raise is to eight, I kinda wanna just put the rest in.
Yeah, I, I wasted all my, my, my luck on the jack seven, and I, I needed to wait and not summon the jack then, and summon the jack here. What happened? Oh, never mind, something is playing a hand of the. I may have like, well, I guess we already looked at the VPip, so. I'm not sure, maybe the blinds went up, or I.
Really, you go from twenty-something to twelve?
Yeah.
Maybe.
It'd be like that sometimes.
Probably blinds went up and I didn't have.
Yeah, two blinds open, uh.
So ace five, and then I had like ace jack.
Went from ear.
I folded all those hands.
And then we did ace deuce.
What was the machine upset about on the ace five suited hand?
I didn't realize you filtered VPips.
Louis, roll.
Yeah, why, I, so I think a lot of the hands are.
It looked like it, it, it didn't, yeah, it was, what was it not happy on? I wanted you to call the.
It's fine.
Did call. On the flop, it wanted you to call? No, what?
No.
What's it mad about?
It's a three-way, buddy, it's all right.
Oh, it's just mad that, it's mad that it's multi-way, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's like, this is not in the tree, it's multi-way.
Yeah.
It's hard to do multi-way sims, so I think that multi-way and ICM are the next ways that people are gonna get edges in this game. But still, it's hard to know all the sims, there's still gonna be players that are not playing, they're playing for fun. Whoa, I still don't have chips.
Seven big blinds.
Yeah.
Happy days.
Happy days, get the gold.
Give me my money back.
Oh, you needed it, you got some of the luck back.
Oh, shh. This is actually kinda close, I feel like with these stacks behind, this is a, not a snap open, but it is an open.
I would jam this, too.
Jamming the good.
Give me my money. Happy day is here, and I, and I win, obviously, because I'm like, oh, chat, chat.
Jam's too much.
No, I.
Yeah, it's over here thinking the same thing, I kinda think you wanna jam worse.
Oh, you mean the other, the twelve?
Ace king, I think you were.
King ten suited, king ten suited.
I didn't open jam, I, I, I jammed over a raise.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, I missed that, my, my apologies.
What's going on? What's going on?
You're, you're stuck in, you check called.
Big blind defense. We get too fair, check, check on the turn, we go all in.
Value.
I, I mean, I think all-in is the best size, but it might be. Only you have like a lower size. Maybe I'll block.
That's at eighteen?
Yeah, raise fold.
All right, it's not a jam?
You get jammed on.
I guess you can jam, I, I think at fifteen, you're definitely jamming.
Would you jam, they have.
At eighteen, I don't think I have a open jam as much, but I know that, that sometimes the machine does, like, open jam deuces and stuff. For even bigger.
I think it's your worst, uh, I think it's your worst all-suit aces jam here, like ace two, ace four, or five, something like that.
I would jam the wheels, ace deuce, two, ace five, ace six, ace seven, ace eight, I'm min raise folding, ace nine and up, I'm jamming.
Yeah. Oh, no, I opening, uh, way more answer than, uh, I, I jamming less.
You're jamming ace nine and up, or you're raise calling it off?
Jamming.
Okay.
I'm not jamming ace king.
Yeah, ace king, I'm.
Though ace nine, maybe I'll jam it.
Ace seven, zero. All in, all of it.
That's what I thought.
Let's see.
And this is really at eighteen, this is the right, this is the exact right stack depth, or is it?
This is seventeen, but it's still like, you know, I think using the start is fine.
Yeah, I have a seventeen.
Rip and everything, yeah, I probably lose, there's better players that jam on, jam the small blind properly. And I need to just rip that.
It's just closer, if so, I wouldn't worry.
There you go, the one big line bet, happy days.
Uh, do I rip or call? I do something.
Could be.
I would rip this, uh.
Yeah, I think it's a, all, all in, I just.
Don't know really.
Just called.
And plus, we're gonna get some.
Oh, it's just a plain-ass call.
Peter here would say, no, 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 we don't wanna get the, we, we keep all the worst kings in the hand.
Keeping the fish on the line, I think we get to jam a lot of the worst kings, though. But then he raised three as well, and then I have all, all spades, I call, I had a queen. Oh, I don't, I think I should just keep the fish online here.
Yeah, it's also the big blocker, so.
I think it's a good spot to get the fish on the line, but maybe the machine, uh. Let's see, yeah, the machine is not happy, you wanna call pure.
Brrr, I lost.
Maybe if you don't have the king of spades, you, you jam it, but with the king of spades, no.
Hmm. I would venture to say that makes sense. Oh, no, no, you're on it.
And we're also in, well, yeah, we're in position, so he rarely needs you all in.
The answer was, it's doing, it's just pure calling with every king.
Oh, the, the, the king is. Okay, there's a little, there's a little bit of it, not much, with a queen of spades. That's.
I don't know, Scott, when I see that, I'm telling myself, it's a pure call.
Yeah, it's a call.
I guess it's just because they could have a flush, and they're gonna keep betting a lot worse.
Gotta keep the fish on the line, this.
And the queen is not very vulnerable.
I know, it is a check, uh, but then again. It's an underpair.
It's fine.
You don't have a club, right? So, checking on the flop. Like it's a ten, I word, so it's, it's.
It's, it's okay. And bet or check.
Yeah, and it bets more than it checks.
And then I just take it on.
Wait, bet the turn now?
Yeah.
I have a betting, a betting disease, was it okay?
Machine say, though.
I like to bet on the turn.
She says, bet the flop, or bet the turn, it's fine.
I got it.
It doesn't, oh, it doesn't.
You have to bet the turn.
After checking the flop.
If you check the flop, you never check this one.
Yeah. You played it perfectly.
Um, close, 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 I guess we call, but it's the minimum of our ICM big blind defense.
I, I feel like we could call that one big one, but we don't always, we don't usually call.
You mean on the flop?
With only one big blind?
We could, I think we have, we can call, but I think it's, it's close.
I don't think that's a bad size for them, is it?
Yeah, they should be betting like.
Probably sometimes. Maybe not a lot indeed, that's true.
But then when they get bigger, we actually get to fold pairs and that kind of texture like.
Right.
Oh yeah, I, I was supposed to call that bet.
Yep.
Yeah, and which he's, oh, it won't tell us what he's.
Oh, it likes raising it too, but I don't think I would raise it as often like on case, king, jack.
I hate, I hate raising that.
Yeah, I hate raising. It likes calling.
You net, it's just the ace, king, jack against an early position, right?
Yeah, we gotta call that.
Backdoor club.
One big blind.
It's a big game, right?
Look at the AVs, man. It's just nothing.
Yeah, it doesn't lose that much by folding.
No.
But.
It's two, two point eight percent folding, that's what it makes.
Yeah, so it's in there. It's never a folding.
So you roll the fold, but not a big deal.
Now you ace again, what? Oh, that, we must be getting.
No.
Yeah.
You would just flat there.
Yeah, you're too short.
Yeah, you're only eighteen.
Or I could all in, oh, I should be calling.
Because think about your stack depth. Whatever happens, you get fifteen big blinds. You're never gonna fold, no matter what cards come. You might as well. You know, keep the guy in and maybe induce this guy.
Yeah, core jam, you want to have aces.
But if it's first early position, you get him to jam. All of his cooler hands.
Yeah, but the thing is, like, you want to keep all of his weekends because he's so tight here. Right?
And then.
I extend.
Funny, because it's true, can do more stuff if I just call. He can do, and do some funny.
I mean, jam is good too, because you have to protect your jamming range with strong hands too. Like, you're not only jamming aces and kings and queens there, you're supposed, you got a decent amount of jams, so you're.
Yeah, jamming's not bad.
Backtime suited and stuff you're jamming. So.
Yeah, but kings, kings jam of course a bit.
I would go all in here.
Rees?
I can also fold, I mean. I don't hate it.
No, I'm not folding button versus cutoff with this stack.
Can't go with, with threes.
As far as where we are with ICM, if we're getting close, that I would just probably call, fold, but.
It's guys that cut off, he's gonna fold the world.
If we are close to ICM, you have to go all in and not tell because the guy will fold a lot.
What about the big, what about the fact that the big blind is, is incentivized to call?
I think we might be.
Yeah, it's very minimal, going.
So it's fifty fifty if it's ICM, which way is it gonna lean?
It's going, it's going to go all in because the guy is very, very blind.
You have the big stack, so you're.
How many, Viv, do you have any idea where we are in a tournament? Did you make notes along the way at all or like?
I can tell you that we.
I think we're getting closer now that.
Very deep, very, very deep. It's.
Because that ace's hand was fairly deep that I was like, I was gonna win that tournament after the ace's hand. I know you're not supposed to think like that, but I was like, yo, I'm gonna finally crack this curse. Because I've been getting nines in these tournaments.
Well, very deep.
In nines.
Well, check it out.
I'm looking for it. I got all the hands already uploaded. I just gotta find it.
So we're halfway here, basically. And number fifty-five on seventy-eight.
Also, Ken, on the other hand, that you were running in the background, we never saw the final result from that one.
I just closed it. The king, the suited kings were staying in there, it looked like.
It was offsuit kings.
Uh, oh, I still have it, so just let me go through this first.
They have to do this, let's, let's take a look at that one.
What do you want to see?
Three threes, you're eight thousand, sixteen thousand, so. I think that's probably like. Not in the money yet.
Okay.
Like a soft bubble, baby?
Yeah, probably soft bubble like.
How many people got paid, Viv?
Fifty, no, it might have been fifty. It's either fifty-four or seventy-one, I'm not sure. Oh, I have the shark scope, I sent you that link.
It was fifty-four.
Okay, yeah, it was a smaller field, so probably fifty-four.
Let's just say there was like eighty left.
Yeah, but you have to give him an average stack then also. So.
Well, smaller fields for ACR and not smaller field in general, man.
What are you guys talking about offsuit kings? What hand was that?
That was, we add queen, jack offsuit, actually.
Add the queen, jack offsuit hand, wasn't it?
And we were calling the offsuit kings.
There was no offsuit kings. There was the offsuit, all the offsuit broadways.
Yeah, that was, it was, it was, we were gonna just look at the.
They were about to. King stay in there, they're down the king five still.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you want me to share a screen?
Eh.
I, I, I want to see.
Uh, CIF twenty, so that's, that's pretty close to, very good.
Those probably a spot that I need to study more though, because I'm bad at these ranges, these button cutoff. Jam, uh.
Yeah, but they have to study ICM, Viv, and not chip.
Okay, so the queen, jack is making point five five. Which is.
Yeah, that's the same.
I mean, I lean towards.
It's not ten percent of aces, but it's still.
I lean towards call.
Uh.
Or when I'm button versus cutoff.
What's this hand here? Who opened? Cut off?
Cut off, yes.
Or button, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Jamming is like a bubble still.
What are the colors?
Uh, this is calling, it's zero point eight.
So the pink is jamming.
It's also zero, zero point eight, something like.
Jamming makes, um, less than calling now.
Yeah, similar.
And, and this, this is taking into account the, the stack sizes?
Fifteen cents less, yeah.
So it is mostly a jam.
Well, but jamming is not making as much money. Oh wait, yeah, it's making more, forty.
And it's close. It's just close, calling and jamming, I mean, you can do both.
It's point fours.
You're jamming these, you match them up.
Oh, you're supposed to rip all those king four, like king.
This is also assuming a certain condition, how far you are in the tournament.
Hold on, this. What hand is this? Because it's got.
Pocket threes.
And why is the ace deuce got, what's the, the, it's the full.
Completely.
Oh, okay.
Cut off open, right?
Yeah, one button. And, and this thing knows about the, the, everybody's stack sizes, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
All right here.
Yeah, there's a big assumption how many people are still left.
Gotcha.
Yeah, I just guessed that they're like thirty or something from the money roughly.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably close, but it's, yeah. So going or jamming probably is the right answer.
That's stack size is not right though. The, the guy in the big blind had. Oh, oh, that's not, that's before he puts in his big blind. Okay. Got it.
Now I uploaded the hand history, so I took it right out of the hand history.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I got the whole hand history.
Oh dang, I rebought HRC and I need to be using it more sometimes, but I get bored of it. But I used to be like an AR, HRC junkie. Oh, yeah, this is an all-in. Everybody's short. Everybody is short. Let's go. That's when you do it. When just like one person has chips and I get to call him. And then he shows up with ace ten or something and I lose and then we go to the next hand.
Why do you call him?
Yeah, this is one of the, he has six big blinds. And maybe I shouldn't, maybe, I don't think I pass up on the open. I can, I should just be all in here anyway, actually. Don't you think I should just rip it? Or I can raise thirteen guy.
Especially if there's ICM pressure, you could be opening your suited aces, just play a lot of ICM pressure, they're gonna get a lot of folds. Yeah.
I think I should be ripping it actually, looking at those stacks.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
Yeah.
Careful, ICM pressure now, this, these charts are gonna change.
Yeah, it's completely different.
But I mean, because I could also.
Not really here, guys, because they don't have chips.
Yeah, this guy, yeah, so it's different. Maybe he's still jamming, I don't know.
This guy can't really call with the one big blind left to act, like it's, and then if he calls.
Call everything, I mean.
Look here, it's ten big blind for ace three suited. How, how big of a mistake could it be?
It's not a mistake, I meant it's just raise or jam.
If you lose, you only have fifteen left. That, that's a big, uh, ICM, uh.
I was kidding, I was green.
You're like, here, I just want to do a lot of open raising to try to steal and like, I mean, I guess we can't call, we can't fold if you jam six, whatever, so.
So I guess.
I can fold it to fourteen big blind jams.
Yeah, so I guess that was the plan. Raise folds to, to like the twelve, thirteen big ones, because they have to be jamming really tight.
You're also raising into a two big nine stack. I don't think it's necessary to open this.
Oh, that's not the, you have an ace, so you're ahead of him most of the time.
Yeah, but you're opening into a bunch of short stack and this guy's gonna be all in for sure. So you're running it, you can equate these there no matter what, right?
Uh, the, 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 Sabre wants you to open jam.
Open jam, okay. The G two wizard says the same, so, sure.
Open jamming all the way up to ace ten suited. All your kings, all your suited kings, every single one of them. King nine off to plus.
Yeah, I'm getting a hand. Well, I guess in our minds is V pip hands. I'm like, yeah, I'm gonna win. Yeah, I'm gonna win this tournament. That's what I was like. I was getting all these hands.
Suited aces and spades.
Let's go.
Okay.
Okay, now I have actual hands. I raise.
Should be close to the final table because of the.
Yeah, this is close to the final table because I was like, I'm gonna win this tournament.
Yeah, but the brief Santa was only for people, so that's.
Yeah, so this is one of those two hour late red tournaments on ACR. Oh yeah, so I have a theory about ACR's hands being slower than other sites, that you know, you, you play less hands. But the tournament takes longer and I'm gonna do an experiment with it.
Oh, I agree with you. It's a lot slower of a side.
This bet?
So this open is not necessary.
And I don't think I should be doing two, two point five bigs either. I think maybe I was in a little bit of an aggression mode or something.
Yeah.
Like I was in a zone here. And, uh, I probably should just min raise. Oh man, I'm just like saying fork him.
Yeah, the king is good for you, so that's.
Give me, give me my chips. Ace high dangler loves double barreling. Oh damn, I think folding there is, is fine.
Did, what did the machine think of the, of that, of that ace two?
The seven, I will have push all in.
Yeah, you gotta call this.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, tough pot.
Yeah, there's also two extra big blinds in the pot, so.
Yeah, you gotta call.
And I bank it.
You didn't even have to bank it. You were ahead. You, you, I mean.
I won the flip. I finally won the flip.
You were ahead on the flip.
Yeah, my guess was that.
Or, like, uh.
It's just not gonna play, Scott.
It said fold, but I said. I said, I'm the chip leader, respect me, boss.
Right.
But I don't make too many of those, like, I actually see a lot of hand histories where they, they V pip like almost every hand as a chip leader, but I'm like.
Yeah, but yeah, with ICM, you can open wider, so that's true, if you're.
And if you're opening wider, then ace deuce is a okay, good hand to do.
Of course.
Clearing folding here.
Oh gosh, why am I in this spot? Who did this? I think.
Yeah, Viv, what the hell are you doing here? You've been playing well. For fifty-five ends. Well, maybe fifty-four. But now this is getting out of hands. What the hell are you doing?
Folding?
I think I call and I'm supposed to fold, but.
Fold.
How did the action go? I missed the flop?
Yep, it's a fold.
Check, check.
I'll check, check.
And. There's no, I guess there is no leading on the turn, right?
Not on the ace.
Wow. Yeah, it just folds.
Oh, this is just a gut shot, I mean, fought out.
Yeah.
Are we big, big blind or we are?
We are.
Are you going to lead on the, on a, on a brick, uh, river?
What's I do?
Is that the plan then? Jack ten is not winning on showdown, that's for sure.
What are, what, what are you gonna do, Viv? You're calling your gut chuck?
Yeah, this is not good.
Yeah, he doesn't have, he doesn't have enough money for you to call the gut.
Now what happens? She's running so good, you start feeling it. You're like, I can't lose. I'm just gonna call everything because I'm getting smashed.
Winner's tilt.
Tilt, yeah.
Winner's tilt. I wasted two big ones and then, and then he just has king, jack and, and wins.
Yeah, that's the problem. If you had king, jack, maybe you can call.
Oh yeah, this is enough, this suited, okay.
That's not, you don't need to open here because you got plenty of reshock stacks that are gonna make you feel bad.
I'm definitely folding like eight, nine, seven, eight, all those are gonna be in the mud because it's twenty big blind effective.
You could open your higher, high, low blockers wider now, like you can start probably open like.
As soon as it connects, it's all bad. High lows are better.
Nah, I think I prefer a king five suited there.
Yeah, I mean, also.
Everyone is folding.
I'm not opening nine, ten suited with all of these people. Because they're gonna rejam too much.
Believe in the J eight, let's go.
Oh goodness, Viv.
I would fold.
This is, I think I fold with ICM.
I think so.
This is the covering stack.
Uh, the only thing rooting for you is that you have a big stack, but.
Doesn't the covering stack gets called more in the big blind?
Yeah, but he's also supposed to be tight.
No bounty.
I mean, I'm folding jack seven and.
I don't think covering matters. You don't want to lose twelve big blinds to a better jack here. Or hit an eight and, and pay a couple streets and just like, you never be, you know, like you're never, you're never gonna know where you are.
Yeah, I mean, that's the problem with almost all the hands. You can make a, a argument with basically everyone.
Like, but no, if you're short, you don't mind losing all day by, but you don't want to lose a quarter of your stack. With this.
It looks like I made a mistake and fucked this up.
It's that one.
Oh no, it's this one.
Chippey V wants to call?
Yeah, but I would just fold.
I'll put it, I'll run it.
I mean, we're gonna be folding a lot of our, uh.
Final two table or not?
We're not that deep, are we?
Wow, sixty hands, yeah, definitely. It might be the final table even.
It's the final table, it's the final CJ was probably.
I think final two is sixty hands.
Alright, we call. This was just complete fuck you. I, I.
Yeah, just lucky.
I don't, I don't think that's.
This is just luck, eh?
No, you. Wait, you have, this is not crazy. You have a gutter and no showdown. This is pretty reasonable.
Oh yeah, I have a gutter and.
This is not crazy.
It's a queen high turn.
Yeah, but like.
It's neutral, like I think on a king, we don't do this ever.
Yeah, yeah, agreed, agreed.
Um, but I think we just, now that you see that I banked the gutter, I have a gutter and no showdown value.
Yeah.
I don't.
We've seen some other ones that were more out of line than this one. That one's like, it's maybe it's.
Fair board. We just checked. This, because I don't think as, we're gonna be bluffing too much if we always do this.
At chippey V, the machine is not too happy with your turn then.
Yeah.
I mean, it loses point one, eight bigs, it's okay.
I'll new one.
This is, this is a field bet. I don't, I don't approve actually. I think that was, I think that was a field bet. I don't, I don't think it was like.
I think it's very bad.
Especially when he has eleven big blinds and he's just gonna, you know, I don't think.
I think it's very bad.
But I, I, what do you think about defending pre flop, Yass?
I think it's bad.
You would call.
It's close, but I would fold.
What would you call? Jack nine or jack ten?
Uh, the suited versions, for sure.
Offsuit, Yoss.
Offsuit.
So, this is final table.
Jack ten, sure, jack nine, maybe.
Say what?
This is the final table, jack eight.
I knew it. So we are on the final table, welcome.
We're not on the, the final table bubble or the final table? I don't.
Final table.
Really?
The jack eight hand was final table.
Then why are we only six handed? Like, I don't remember that going that, oh, maybe I was folding a lot in the final table. And being in it. And then.
Being in it, if you have bad hands, you have bad hands, I mean. Come on, it's not nitty.
This is definitely not the final table, because there was an ace ten hand in this hand issue.
Sure, are these, look at the scope and see who finished, are these the last people in the game?
Hmm, I don't. I think it's final table by yet.
Well, according to the way the way I found it, there's. No more tables after this one.
All right.
So if you're on the final table, Viv.
I'm gonna double check.
I don't like the defend at all.
Yeah, he's a small blind.
Final table, jack eight, your big line, right? Forty-one bigs?
Yeah.
It's the final table.
Wait.
Get away with a lot, uh.
On that final table, do we, do we, do you ever jam into that ten big blind stack because of the five big blind stack? That he's gotta outlast? Or is that just insane?
And D, Jack ten off would have been bottom of your range.
Jack ten off, I knew that. I wasn't sure about Jack nine.
Yeah, I said it too. I mean, Jack nine folds, Jack eight's mixing, Jack nine's.
I need to be opening a lot. Oh, this is the server didn't like this. I better not double it. I think I checked back.
I hope so.
Yeah, I pre-ran some hands for the final table. We're going so fast that I'm got, looking at that and I'm missing hands, so. I'm not really sure what's going on here at the moment.
But how did we go from but to five handed so quick then? Maybe I just didn't get much hands and then, I think, I know that in the beginning, a lot of people, a few people knocked themselves out. Like I said, like, these, the structure on this one is like. The one, the new one, twenty-five K starting stack structure.
You just fold a lot, Viv, and they knocked themselves out.
Yeah.
I think I had this hand marked. I think I already flagged this one, you button here. I mean, um, forty-one big blinds on.
Yeah, I don't think I should be actually.
So actually, I actually flagged the last jack eight head.
Yeah, that's the one that, that's the one we were looking at. And it had it, and I was wondering if if there's any jamming.
Uh, with our range, there's jams. When we were in the big blind?
Yeah, because of the, because we had a five big blind stack that the eleven. Had wanted to outlast.
Yeah, we have jams in our range, but not that hand.
Okay. How bad were the jams? What's the worst tangible jam?
Uh, let me put it back up. Load hand. Jack eight, open. So he opened hijack, right? In that hand?
Yeah.
We're big blind, we're jamming like our offsuit wheel aces, mixing some ace seven, ace eight.
Blockers.
Our suited aces mostly up to seven, like king five, king six, king three, king four mixes. Yeah, suited, so king three, king four max, king five pure, king six mostly jams, king eight, king nine. King jack, king queen, jacks, queens, kings, ace, queen, ace, king. My before is a little bit smatteringish stuff. Jack eight actually ended up being a fold, I ran it all the way out last night. So, yeah, it's not a good call.
Okay.
Jack ten's bottom, jack ten. Was making, calling. Barely anything.
And what are the, what offsuit kings jam?
Might be easier if I probably showed it.
Yeah.
So no offsuit kings, I don't think.
Yeah, show it. Okay. Okay, so a lot of calls. Okay.
Blocker heavy, that's what you want to be.
Yep.
So on the.
I wasn't this hand, that was the other jack eight hand.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So this one we four left, we open jack eight. Uh, on the flop, uh. We, we should be betting a little bit. Uh, like it's an inside board, okay, so we range betting into card. But since we range bet, we use the one big nine a lot. Okay, and then what, what is basically driving or 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 sizing here on this texture is a diamond? So if we have like jack eight off, with that diamond in our hand. Uh, we can size up, we can use bigger size, but without the diamond, it seems to be more like a bad small. So betting small here is good. But maybe a bit smaller and when you have a diamond, you size up. On the turn, checking back, seems fine.
Yeah, for medium strength, I know.
Yeah.
Oh, so yes, I mean, cause I think I bluff catch. Ah, yeah.
This is good.
It's screaming, it's screaming thin value and he's not thin valuing worse than my jack. So I should be calling, like, I have.
Like, the, the people don't bet for ten value often enough on this spot. They don't love the river.
They have his.
I mean, the killer move, the killer move here is you, uh, you find hands to raise them with.
You bet on the two big blinds and they called, what can they have?
An ace.
An ace or a king.
Diamonds.
Cause they just never have the straight. Don't wanna call off when they're second.
Actually, yeah, what kind of hands don't wanna raise them with? I think I wanna have a queen or a ten.
I agree.
No diamonds for sure.
Yeah, queen or a ten if I diamonds, I'm bad at finding those too. That's why I'm playing fifteen dollar tournament.
You got like queen four diamonds in your range, that might do it.
I've seen some of the real crushers, we play against like very exploitative players.
This is ICM also, and you're the smaller stack, so, uh.
You're the bigger stack. You're the bigger stack.
Not after this hand or not.
He was, okay. Uh, pro, uh, both are pretty big stacks, so be careful.
Look at that, the queen four. Found one.
What are we, what are we raising?
Yeah.
Queen four, like I said, we need a queen or a ten, so queen four, king four. Oh, king four is a pair, so if we have a queen four, we have bottom pair. With a.
Queen blocker.
Blocking their set, we we're saying, hey, we just bank the set on you, but we didn't really, we just have a pair of fours, but we blocked the straight.
Jack fours two pair and ace fours two.
But then queen three and queen E is doing it too, so all of our trashy queens get to raise here. That's, yeah, learning something, I'm learning something.
Black king is straight. I, I low dangler.
So it doesn't like the tens as much, but it loves the queens. I guess they're more likely to be, like, they're not calling as many tens.
Probably.
Cause queen ten make a straight. But tens are not that useful to raise.
Then also that he blocks with a queen jack and better.
Oh, but it does like to call the.
Your higher queens, um.
Likes to call the jacks.
Double black bluffs, I think, to.
Both green jack.
Totally queen ten blocks two potential, lots of straight, right?
Queen ten is a straight. Queen nine is not giving it.
Oh, uh, Shpurya.
Queen six is mixing call, but I don't think you would call that in real life, I don't think.
Yeah, I think you should fold.
Yeah, he always has like.
I would just fold.
They don't. People don't block bluff as much.
And again, is he calling a jam?
With an ace, maybe?
I have a hard time, man.
I don't think so. I don't think he's calling off.
Pretty sick ICM scenario, you'd put the guy in. It would be, you'd put him in the box like crazy, but I think it's just like, is it necessary?
Capable folding top pair.
Uh, if you put him in the box here with this guy, this guy, and then like both, both big stacks, I think.
They only have to call, uh, like thirty percent of the time and you're putting yourself in the box.
I think here, Yoss, you need, you need a lot better than a street to call.
Yeah.
If you go all in.
ICM wise may be true, but do they fold? That's the problem.
I don't, I wouldn't put.
I think so. If you go all in here, he's gonna think about his twenty-eight big blinds and he's gonna see like seven here. Fifteen here, he still has two X's, his stack. Definitely folds most of his aces there.
I, I would say, oh, your line is no, makes no sense, I just called him.
I think the leak, people at these stakes of our opponent, these stakes is they're willing to put in a, whip it on the flop and on the river, but they're unwilling to call. All of their chips.
And, look, went, uh, went check, check, so what can you have as a button? Your line makes no sense.
No, the claim wasn't that we must do it there, the claim was, I brought it up to me.
All these hands, this is, this is where, this is actually where you need to get lucky in tournaments.
We obviously have nuts in our range on that river, or we wouldn't get to go all that, so we're gonna have.
Now I'm like, and now I'm like, okay, so I need a third to break even on the day. And now I'm second, so I'm profitable, but will I go from profitable to actually profitable on this Sunday? Heads up for that. Let's see what happens.
Are we gonna see every hand? Heads up?
Yes.
Good.
Boy, I think we need to. Keep the heat on the sixes here.
What would you do here?
Uh.
Cause at this depth, I'm happy calling.
Forty sucks, yeah, forty's rough.
Yeah, we are out of position, so maybe you'll try.
I wanna just jam that for three, I kinda wanna jam.
That was my sister, just coughing.
I looked it up, it's one hundred percent a good jamming or three betting, it's never flats, never flats a pair of forty big blinds, except for deuces and threes.
I have a link, it's called, I don't fucking believe him and he raises a lot of aces. We chop. I told you, I don't fucking believe him. He's trying to, he's trying to bet me off. Oh, yeah, I got trip sevens. Ah, he didn't have anything. Oh, this is, this is the end of the tournament. This is the end of the tournament.
Last hands.
I win the tournament.
We glazed over some mistakes.
Yeah, then we didn't go over all the hands, heads up.
What happened to the seven, five suited hand?
Yeah, I saw it, but we ran over it quick.
We can go back to it after, after Vivla wins the tournament.
Yeah.
How often do you guys check rate? Uh, okay, also, okay, nevermind.
I bet. I bet big, he jams and I'm like.
Snap.
Snap.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. I just wanna bet that turn a little bit bigger to make it more geometric.
Happy day.
The size used on that turn leaves a river that's a little too deep.
Yeah, Viv, I wanna say congratulations. I think your, your game has improved a lot with the years.
This is actually big for me, cause I kept getting ninth in these sixteen fifties and I was so fucking happy to win them, because I was like, I need to win one of these damn things.
This is the first industry that we do from you, where I don't yell at you and I don't call you a fish.
Uh, you yelled at me before she got here, though.
I heard, he sent me an email, it was like, cap is, cap is weird.
Congratulations, Viv.
Open the seven, five hand real quick.
Yeah, let's look, let's look through the, let's look through the whole heads up thing and just.
So this is, this is, it's kinda interesting, hold on, I'll just stop.
What am I doing?
No, it's, it's cool, it's just a cool spot, let me see, uh.
I, I mean.
Let me share the screen.
It's not high frequency three, that's for you.
Oh wait, did you raise? What happened?
I know, don't raise. I should be through, I mean, I know that, I, I haven't studied heads up ranges as hard as I probably should, cause I think I've been playing heads up. By like, by like how my opponent's playing and by feel mostly.
So this is.
Share again.
Turned out to be a pure raise.
Share again.
Where, pre-flop tip?
Sharon?
Share again, I sold it to show you the action.
I just saw it in it.
So I should be raising, yeah, because you need to be three betting a lot in heads up, but.
So you're implementing this strategy?
Well, I just wanna look at, no, cause I didn't, I, I didn't know, that's why I ran it, and I saw, okay, it's pretty cool. What, what is the E V difference between calling and raising?
Wait, sorry, we're on the wrong.
Yeah, we're on the wrong three, the small blind.
Small blind left, we need to do small blind raises and a big blind defense.
Small blind raise. Second line, yeah.
And then go to big blind strategy.
And it's not small blind first, big blind.
Okay, so we are raising back.
Yeah.
We're raising the boomerang.
Let's just make sure the action.
It is in heads up, Potter, that's different. You're out of position here.
Oh, that wasn't a heads, heads up analysis?
No, it's small blind first, big blind, and then you're, that's different.
Yeah.
I just looked at a bunch of tiers, it's, it's up three bet.
At least, I don't know, I don't, actually don't know how HRC is interpreting, uh, this. So it's difficult to save, so.
So heads up, you have to play like pretty much eighty percent of hands. From the big blind and like ninety percent of the hands from the button. And so you have to find some raises and limps and. And that might not be as comfortable, so yeah, this is, this is fine, like, I, I, I agree.
Yeah, I was right. Seven, five suited, you missed this spot. You should have three bet, pre-flop.
Yeah, okay.
This is, this, you know what? This is Vincent Lamb's favorite play in his whole life. Blind versus blind, he raises suited connectors. So think about him and race.
For sure.
And I wanna say on that one, it's not a super important that you raise every exact hand at that exact frequency, but we all need bluffs. Uh, people, people give respect, uh, we get folds, or they, they don't fold pre, they fold flop, and so we've gotta find the bluffs. Um, that's what our opponents are doing wrong, that's what we can do right.
Yeah, as long as you're pulling from the right regions, right? It's pretty good.
I agree.
Yeah, you're, you're.
I agree.
Heads up, you have to find a lot. Yeah.
Happy days.
I always like getting first, but.